Okay, ready when you are.
Good morning. Welcome to the San Mateo County Planning Commission meeting of December 8th, 2021. Please, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Chair Ketchum.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and this.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any subject that is not on today's agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes, and first staff will explain how the public comment process works for our remote meeting.
Thank you, Chair. For those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will use the raised hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raised hand feature to raise your hand and to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompt in connection with each agenda item before using the raised hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of a meeting for an agenda item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, it will prompt you to unmute your microphone and you can't be speaking. So right now, for public comment for any items that are not on the agenda, and I do not see any hands raised chair for this item.
Thank you. Seeing no request to speak, if there are no objections, we will close oral communications and move on to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of November 10, 2021, and a resolution concerning remote meetings under the Brown Act. May we have a motion to approve?
So move it, set the consent agenda.
A second.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, moving on now to the regular agenda, staff will introduce item number three.
Thank you for item number three. We have an informational item being brought to you by Mr. William Gibson.
Thank you, Janice. Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, this item is just a quick informational update on a set of new state laws that are going to affect the way the county processes certain projects and what the planning commission sees. So let me just share my screen. And then you should be seeing the PowerPoint now, so. So this is an update on SB nine. This is a recently adopted state law which will take effect in January 1st of 2022, and it impacts the way the county is allowed to consider certain two-unit projects on residential properties and subdivisions of residential properties. So I'm just going to go briefly through an overview of the law, where it applies, the two types of developments that it applies to, which is two-unit developments and what's called urban lot splits, which is subdivisions of residential, single parcels, and then how those two can work together. I'll go through how CEQA applies, how this works in the coastal zone, and a brief summary and next steps. And just to note, I'm presenting today, but Tim Fox and Melissa Andrew Coppolas in County Council's Office, Melissa Ross in our office, Lisa Alzasa and myself as well, have all been working to understand the implications of this because it is new and it's moving very quickly. So again, Senate Bill nine is effective January 1st, 2022, and it amends California Planning Law to require jurisdictions to ministerially approve two-unit developments on qualifying single-family parcels. And it amends the subdivision map act to require ministerial approval of certain subdivisions, which are called urban lot splits, just for convenience, on qualifying single-family parcels, and it extends the expiration period of tentative subdivision maps by law from 12 to 24 months. And so where does this apply? SB nine applies in all single-family zoning districts that are within either a designated urbanized area or urban cluster, as defined by the U.S. Census Bureau. For our case, that is essentially L of the unincorporated county that is east of Highway 280, so most of the urban county on the B side and also the urban mid-coast. And the zoning districts to which this apply applies are our single-family residential zoning districts, which are R1, R H, R E, and R1 CCP. However, and I'll go into this a little bit more, this is mostly applicable to the B side. The coastal zone impact is extraordinarily limited. So the two types of projects again are two-unit developments and urban lot splits. So the creation of two units on a single-family parcel and the subdivision of a single-family parcel and two parcels. So just addressing two-unit developments first. So the law requires us to ministerially approve two-unit developments on eligible single-family parcels. And that means a proposed development can result in no more than two new units. The development can be one additional unit out of parcel that already has an existing unit, and that appears to include parcels that have an existing unit and an ADU. So theoretically, you could have a single-family parcel that has one unit or a unit and an accessory dwelling unit, and you can add one new unit, or you could have a parcel with no units and add two. So again, these must be single-family zones. They must be in an urbanized area or cluster. The project site cannot be a historic landmark or in a historic district. It cannot contain prime agricultural land, a variety of sensitive habitats, or be subject to a conservation easement. And the project cannot alter or demolish deed-restricted affordable housing, rent-controlled housing, housing withdrawn from the rental market in the last 15 years, which is essentially Ellis, what we call Ellis Act withdrawal from the market, or housing occupied by a tenant in the last three years. So the intent is these projects do not replace or demolish affordable or rental housing. The projects remain, so if an applicant proposes under SB nine to create two units or one additional unit on their, their single-family parcel, in addition to what's already there, the projects are still subject to our zoning regulations, our subdivision regulations, and our design standards, but only the ones that can be objectively applied. So no subjective standards. And whatever standards we apply, they may not physically preclude construction of two units of at least 800 square feet. But there's one exception to that. We can apply four-foot side and rear setbacks. And this is very similar to, to what you've seen from the new accessory dwelling unit laws. The standards are very similar. We can apply a four-unit, a four-foot setback on the side and the rear, even if that does preclude two 800 square foot units. But if one of the, the units is the replacement of an existing structure rebuilt in the same location, no setback is required if that structure already has no setback. So the requirements that we can impose on these projects, we can only require one parking space per unit. And that includes if either you have a primary residence on a parcel, and you already have two parking spaces, and you want to create one more unit, you do not have to create another parking space in that case. So the outcome would be one per unit, period. If you're creating two new units on an empty parcel, again, we would only be able to require one parking space per each unit. No parking is required if project is with it, if the project is within a half mile of walking distance of a high-quality transit corridor or major transit stop or within one block of a car-share vehicle location. And again, these standards are very similar to what the state imposed for the accessory dwelling unit regulations as well. Proposed units cannot be used for short-term rental, less than 30 days, and we cannot prohibit connected units as long as they can comply with the building code. So you could have two independent, single-family residences on a parcel, or you could have a duplex with the two units connected. There will be no hearings. Hearings are prohibited. Review and approval are at staff level only, and again, only applying objective standards. And projects may be denied if the building official, or in that case, our building director, makes written findings based on a preponderance of evidence that it would have specific adverse impact on public health and safety or physical, or the physical environment, and if there's no feasible method to mitigate or avoid that impact. But specific adverse impact must be something that is quantifiable, direct and unavoidable, that is based on existing standards that we have already adopted that are knowable by the applicant in advance, and that can clearly be assessed and judged. So we cannot just make a determination that we believe this has an unavoidable impact. We have to have a standard by which we are, we are making that judgment. So that, that, those are the basic standards for the two-unit development, where you have a parcel, you want to build two units on it. The urban lot split standards. So again, the law requires us to now ministerially approve subdivisions of one residentially zoned, single-family residential zoned lot into two lots, if it meets certain requirements. So the eligible parcels are the same as for two-unit developments. It must be single-family zoned. They must be in the urbanized area or cluster, not a historic landmark or in a historic district, not contain private tag land or sensitive habitats, and they cannot demolish deed-restricted affordable housing or rental housing. The lot split must result in two roughly equal lots. They can be as much as basically 20% different. So you can have six, if you split a lot into, one of them can be 60% of the original lot, one can be 40, but that's the greatest differential between the two, the two new lots. Each resulting lot must be at least 1,200 square feet. The lot that is split cannot have been created through, through this mechanism previously. So you can't split a lot using the SB nine law and then subsequently split one of those new lots again with the SB nine law. So this is a one-time subdivision under this, this new special rule. Neither the owner nor any person acting in concert with the owner can have previously subdivided an adjacent parcel through an SB nine lot split. So you, one developer or one applicant cannot come in and split a single lot and then split the lot next to it and split the lot next to it again and again. And this is just intended to preclude large-scale developers coming in and subdividing lot after lot after lot, rather than the intent of the law, which is that homeowners themselves have the opportunity to split their lots. Units created on the new lots must be residential, and the applicant for this subdivision must sign an affidavit stating that they intend to occupy one of the resulting housing units on those two lots as a principal residence for at least three years from the date of approval, unless they're a land trust or a not-qualified nonprofit that is creating housing. And this again is, is intended to keep this from being used as a large-scale development scheme. This is intended for the homeowners or smaller-scale applicants to subdivide their lots. There are no other owner occupancy requirements. And again, the resulting units created on those new lots cannot be used for short-term rental. Again, we can only require one parking space per unit, and no parking is required if the project meets certain conditions, proximity to transit or car share. Again, projects on the split lots do remain subject to our zoning regs, to the subdivision regulations and design standards, but only those that can be objectively applied. No hearings, review and approval will be at the staff level only. And again, the project may be denied if the building official makes the findings, but those findings must be based on previously adopted written standards. So you can do the two-unit development. You can do the subdivision lot split. You cannot split a lot again after it's been split under SB nine, but you could split, do an urban lot split, split a residentially zoned, single-family parcel into two, and then use SB nine to create two units on each of the subsequent parcels. So in effect, what you get is from one single-family residentially zoned parcel, you can get four units, and that is the largest, probably the largest implication of this, this new law, is the split and then the two-unit development. However, we are not required to permit more than two units maximum on those parcels. So if a project comes in, uses the urban lot split provision, and then wants to build two developments, we are not allowed to, we are not required to allow them to create two-unit developments and accessory dwelling units. So it's a maximum of two, including accessory dwellings in that case. So there's a certain limitation, but in effect, four new units can be created or one previously could be created. So the applicability of CEQA, because both of these are now by law ministerial, they do not require any subjective discretion on the part of the county. They are exempt from CEQA, both the subdivisions and the two-unit lot splits. If we decide to adopt an ordinance, which we are allowed to do implementing SB nine, we're not required to, but it is possible that we do so, then adoption of that ordinance would also be exempt from CEQA. In the coastal zone, so the only change in the coastal zone is that SB nine eliminates any requirement for the county to hold public hearings for coastal development permits that attempt to either do an SB nine lot split or a two-unit development under SB nine. But it does not prohibit us from holding such hearings. And that appears in our interpretation to be the only change applicable to the coastal zone. So, so just to summarize, so the big implication obviously is this is going to allow potentially significantly more development of certain single-family residential lots. Outside the coastal zone, the planning commission and the board of supervisors will not be seeing these at all. They will all be staff level. They will all be ministerially approved. Design review will be strictly limited to those standards that can be applied objectively, that don't require subjective judgments. In the coastal zone, no current change, current change. We're not required to hold hearings in the coastal zone, but we're allowed to, so we don't intend to change our processes at this point. So for the moment, there's no change to the coastal zone at all. And the number of potential projects that may come in and the impacts of those are unclear. There are some estimates that somewhere around 5% of all single-family lots in the state are both eligible and financially feasible to do this. Eligible parcels is a much higher amount, but how many people will be interested and have the wherewithal to go forward with it is, is not clear at this point. So we'll be evaluating that to see how, how it goes. We do have a number of projects already before the law is even in effect, coming in to inquire about the possibility of doing it. So there surely is some interest, but we don't know how, how sustained that will be as we go forward. Next steps, the planning department is creating an SB nine mapping tool, which will show which parcels, based on size, based on zoning, based on location, are eligible for this. So it won't guarantee that applicants can, can pursue this, but it does show the potential, and it'll help the planners and the public understand just which parcels you, you could pursue this on if you were interested. We are creating an applicant checklist as well for SB nine, which you have in your packet for you. We'll have a webpage up, providing people guidance on how the law works and how they can pursue it. And as I said, we are allowed to adopt an implementing ordinance, which, which kind of defines how we are applying this, but we're not required to. So we intend to evaluate the impacts as we go forward and determine whether that is something that's required for us to, to make sure that this works well. And with that, that sums it up, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have, I think. And Tim may chime in on the legal, Mr. Fox may chime in on the legal questions as well.
Sorry. Thank you. So do Commissioners have questions for staff? We'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Not at this moment. I'll, I'll, I'll hold off until our discussion.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Yeah, I just have an, an observation. It stated that SB nine, some of the guidance and some of the procedures by the county are not required but not prohibited. Does the county of San Mateo have decided, are they gonna do this type of procedures? Or they're supposed to be ministerially, but they're said they are not required, required but not prohibited? I just want to know how, if they have decided how to proceed in this kind of situation.
I believe the only provisions that are, are kind of discretionary on our part are the coastal zone hearings. I think the rest of them are essentially mandatory. We are continuing, we're going, for the moment, we're going to continue to hold hearings for projects such as this in the coastal zone. But we are allowed to apply in the coastal zone all of our other regulations, including designer review. So there are no changes on that score. So in the coastal zone, basically, this has no impact on us. We're not going to change our procedures. It's the B side outside of the coastal zone where this has the significant impact, and we're strictly limited in how we process and how we review and approve this type of project.
Then another question that I have, if, if you know, like for areas like Bay City or other areas that, that they are like residential areas, do you think is eventually will cause an impact where people are buying properties that are primary residence that eventually will become two residential split-level lots?
Yes, I do think, you know, again, how much that's going to happen, but I think it will happen to some extent, absolutely. I think homeowners who have a single-family lot, who have a house on it, will be interested in splitting it because obviously there's a financial gain there. I think there will be people interested in buying lots for that purpose. And I think for empty lots, where it might not have been financially feasible or desirable to build one unit, well, now you can split it and potentially build four on an empty lot. And that makes a fairly significant difference in how, how desirable that lot might be. So that is an incentive, certainly. So it's impossible to estimate how much, but definitely there will be a change, and it'll, this applies not only on a corporate county, but to every city within the county, every city statewide. So yeah, it's, it's a fairly sweeping change.
And the last question is, would the SB nine had some sort of like impact and limitation for setbacks that currently like we enforcing not ministerially but through, through commission hearing versus the, the, the requirement that SB, which is a lot less setback than the regular, that the regular projects, do you think that will have sort of like an adverse impact?
It's a good question. So, I mean, it depends. It's going to depend very much on the nature of the project. We are allowed to impose our regular setbacks if they don't preclude, if they don't prevent the applicant from creating two 800 square foot units. So if the lot is big enough, we can impose all of our setbacks. If the setbacks would prevent two 800 square foot units, then we can still impose the four-foot setbacks. So it kind of depends on the nature of the lots. I think there will be some lots where we can't impose our regular setbacks and only can impose the four-foot setbacks. How much of an adverse impact that will be, I think, depends on how close those units are to the units on the next lot. It's very situational, but I think there'll definitely be some cases where we can't impose the normal standards.
Okay. Thank you very much for the answer.
Commissioner Gupta.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I do have questions. My first, actually first comment is, it's a very good summary that, that was presented to us today. And I would request that this presentation should be put on the website so that we could refer to it in the future. Questions? My question is that what I understood is that most of the approvals will take place at the staff level. Are there any, or what kind of things would be coming to the planning commission? Are the change in zoning to split the lot? Or are any of those going to come to the planning commission?
No. So the, the implication of this is very similar to the accessory dwelling unit regulations. They basically have taken away public hearings entirely. So normally subdivisions are a minute, are a discretionary approval where we do environmental review. It comes to, often it'll come to a hearing. These particular subdivisions will no longer go to a hearing. There's no environmental review. And the proposal for two units on these lots, again, they all have to be single-family zoning, so it's only the specific, specifically zoned lots. If someone wanted to change their zoning to single-family zoning in order to do this, then that would come to the planning commission. But if it's already zoned, single-family residential, these will be entirely staff-level decisions with no hearings.
Okay, thank you. Can these units, like supposing a parcel is split and they, they build two homes on there, can they be independently sold?
Yes, they can. So not only the lot split, so I, I believe the provisions are, and, and Ms. Fox can jump in as well and confirm, but if you split the lots, the two lots can be sold separately. If you build two units on one lot, you can convey the two units separately as well, as if they were a condo, condominium. So all of the units built on this, both the lot itself and all of the units built on the lot are intended to be conveyed, able to be sold separately.
Okay, but then how does this three-year ownership apply?
So we would make the applicant sign an affidavit that they were intending. So basically, they have to sign a legal commitment that they are going to live in one of the units for three years, which just, I, I believe that the intent is just to preclude people from flipping their lots and just making them purely into a development project. This is, the, the state intends this to be homeowners, and it's going to be hard to enforce, quite frankly, but they intend for homeowners who own the lot to do this themselves in the same way that you would build an accessory dwelling unit yourself to add density, but also to have it be used for your uses or as a rental project while you still live in the unit. So that's the intent of that, but it's only a three-year, a three-year time period.
And, and this has to be contiguous three years or?
Yes, yes, for the first three years after the, after the approval.
Okay. And, and after that, they are free to do whatever they like?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Okay, and I think most of my questions are answered. Just, just more information type, you mentioned that there are 5%, at least that's, that's what we know at this time, that 5% parcels in the state which are eligible for, which are eligible for either splitting the lots or building two homes on a lot. So are applications already coming in?
So yes, applications are already coming in. They're, they're not going to be fully processed until January 1st, but they are, applications are stacking up in advance. And the estimate that I was talking about, there was an academic study that said there are far more than 5% of the parcel eligible, but the parcels that are eligible and where it would make financial sense to do it was an estimate of approximately 50%, 5%. But that's a very fuzzy estimate. No one really knows. That was just an attempt to get a handle on how much impact could this be immediately? It may be far more than that. It could be far less than that. So, but yes, applications have begun to come in for us already.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you. No more questions at this time.
Commissioner Hanson.
Good morning, Will. My question is, reading it up, there's an exemption for special districts. Does the county have any special historical districts that would be exempt?
We don't have any historical districts. We have some historical sites. So if they were to propose it on those specific historical sites, they would not be able to pursue it, but we don't have any districts that qualify.
How is a special district created?
It could, so we can adopt special historic districts. Generally, there would be a historic, historic commission that would recommend districts, and we adopt them. They can be state-designated. They can be locally designated. We just do not have any locally designated ones. So it's not impossible that, you know, we could pursue creating districts if that were, if that were appropriate. We just have never created any, any historic districts in the past.
What I'm really getting at, let's say, a community like Broadmoor or the Sequoia Track got together as homeowners and asked for a creation of a historic district so they can manage the density. How does one? You know, what, you know, what is that process and what do we watch out for?
That is an interesting question. I would defer to Mr. Fox. I, if he has any idea how that process works, I've never seen it before, so I'm actually unfamiliar. Yeah, I'm not sure any of us have ever seen that before, so I'm unfamiliar with the process, unfortunately. Yeah, I'm not sure any of us have ever seen that before, so I'm unfamiliar with the process, unfortunately.
Before Tim provides his legal analysis, I would just propose or assume that historical districts need to meet certain criteria. And from my experience about qualifying for things like the National Register, those criteria are fairly significant. And I think it would be a reach to propose that some of our urban subdivisions would qualify. But I don't know, Mr. Fox, do you have a perspective on the matter?
I think it's something that we have to explore and come back to report on. I know that there are historic districts in a few of our cities that are administered by the cities. They generally tend to involve structures more from the Victorian era than the mid-century. And our, many of our unincorporated communities have more mid-century tract subdivision style housing than historic structures. So we would need to explore what the constraints are about declaring one of those districts.
I know the city of San Mateo has a historic district just south of Central Park, which is nineteen twenties. They were all uniquely designed buildings of that era. They wanted, they wanted to preserve it and they did that, I believe, back in the nineteen eighties. So that's the only one I know of, mid-century. But, you know, I just, you know, if we had a process or we had rules, I just wanted to know if we don't. You know, if someone declares it a, I mean, who declares it a historic district even, you know, if I say it, does that make it?
Well, that answer I know. It's declared by the Board of Supervisors by the establishment of an ordinance. So we would follow an ordinance process to create a historic district. We don't have a process by which individuals can declare their own houses historic for these purposes, but there is a process for adopting an ordinance.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all my, my only questions.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. The, just to thank you for your presentation. It was something of a whirlwind. And just to make sure I understand, in the coastal zone, it seems like an important word here is required. So you're saying no public hearing is required for coastal development permit, but you're, you're going to continue doing them anyway. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But at some time, you could decide not to.
That's correct, but only for these particular SB nine projects, which again, we're allowed to require all of our normal standards in the coastal zone, so it almost makes those projects irrelevant because we don't have to approve them ministerially. We can use our subjective design standards. We can apply all the other standards. So they're really not SB nine projects in that case. I think we're all a little confused as to why the hearing requirement is removed when the projects themselves would still be under all the other standards. It may be the state has some other intent there that we're not understanding, but at present, it doesn't seem to change anything for the coastal zone.
Okay, so in other words, you could do a lot split, split it into less than five thousand square feet in the coastal zone anyway, right?
No, that's correct. So, Mr. Fox, can you confirm? I mean, that's our understanding, correct?
I think that's right. That's our present understanding.
Okay, so, and then also the zoning regulations do require public hearings if the CDP is appealable to the coastal commission. But once again, it's a moot point, as you say, okay. And then, of course, the design review process is also in the zoning ordinance, so that would still require public hearing.
That's correct.
All right, but then the underlying issue here then for the coastal zone is that the five thousand square feet is the minimum partial size.
That's correct. Yeah, again, we think it's moved in the coastal zone because of those reasons.
And the county has no intention of trying to update the zoning regs or the LCP as they did for the ADU.
No, not at present. I, we do not. I think this is dramatic enough without pursuing that course. So yes, at present, we have no intention to do that.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll have public comment on this item, and I'll turn this portion over to Ms. Lujan.
Mr. Can I, I think I do have a question following up on the comments. So out of the coastal zone, then the lot size, is it going to be, continue to be like a five thousand minimum size? To be able to split, or I mean, you couldn't split actually a five thousand square foot lot, could you?
You could split a five thousand square foot lot and, and the only rule is that the resulting lots are at least twelve hundred square feet. So I assume, and Mr. Fox can confirm, that means sub five thousand square feet lots can be actually split in this case. But that's a good question.
Right. Wow.
Yeah, I think that's something we're not entirely clear on, but my assumption to this point is substandard lots can actually be subdivided.
That is going to be presenting some interesting you know, situations going forward. So when you say like, right now, we're saying like only five percent of the lots in the, in the state are eligible. I'm trying to understand why only five percent were saying that at this moment. I mean, technically, isn't pretty much most of the lots in the state eligible? Going forward, because anybody, I guess, going forward, if they want to, you know, maximize their profit and they have a house, couldn't they basically tear the house down, split the lot? And then, you know, add four new units?
Yes, and again, this is just, so the estimate wasn't that parcels that are legally eligible. There's a far greater amount of parcels that are legally eligible, although recall, they have to be in these urbanized areas or urban clusters. So there's a lot of more rural areas of the state that don't qualify for that. But no, there are, there are far more than that. What the estimate, the analysis was trying to say of the eligible parcels, what percentage is it financially feasible to actually do this right now? How does the cost of doing it make it worthwhile for what you'll get from it? And that estimate said only about five percent of the parcels. But that's, again, that's just a very rough estimate. And it was just trying to get an early handle on what the implications of this might be. And I can't tell you how many, what the raw number of that is, but five percent is still a very large number of parcels.
Oh, it's, I believe it, yeah. It's a huge number, but I mean, I think when you take a picture of, at the moment of, you know, if someone wanted to do a split as we stand, as the bill goes into effect, yeah, maybe five percent, but as you move forward in the years to come, there'll be huge amounts of that. So this is where it's going to get interesting, I think. And the pushback that the communities will have over the years to come. Anyway, I'm just trying to also wrap my, my head around what it really means in the long run.
Yeah, I agree. I think, I also think you're right that as people see others doing it, they will be inspired to do it. So I think we're all trying to kind of get a grasp on what the implications are.
Right, right. All right, all right. No more questions. Yeah.
You know, one of the limiting factors that hasn't come up in the discussion so far is our infrastructure. And, you know, perhaps, Will, you might add to that, but I just one point before you go into that, that came up in my discussions with the local agency formation commission, which is related to infrastructure. So we have many lots that are not eligible for development because they don't have a safe way of treating wastewater. And in order to become developable, they would need to be included within a service district that can provide that service. And there's nothing in SB nine that eliminates the LAFCO process for expanding district boundaries to provide services, municipal services. So I think that's a limiting factor. I mean, we have some areas of the county that still are on sort of biseptic systems, and I think that will certainly be a limiting factor. I would expect, and Will, correct me if I'm wrong, but in those circumstances, if somebody came in and tried to make a case that they were eligible to develop under SB nine, I think that would be one of the instances where the building official would have a reasonable basis to deny it based on findings that know that would be an adverse impact to public's health and safety.
Yes, I, I'm not sure what the, you know, I'm not even sure that would be necessary. I believe they still have to, in the case where it's on septic, you would still have to demonstrate septic capacity for the, the usage that you would have with the new units. You would have to have a recent perk test showing that you have sufficient capacity. So that's a case where I think we could just deny it because you can't treat your wastewater. So that, and the same with water. So if you're unable to provide sufficient water or wastewater capacity for the number of units on the parcel, I don't even think we have to get to the building official stage. I think that allows us simply to say no. And if LAFCO won't extend services to the parcel to rectify that, then again, we can simply say no. And that's how I understand it at present. So you do have to have the infrastructure appropriate to serve these parcels. And, you know, it is a danger to health and safety, obviously, but I don't even think we need a formal statement from the building official. I think that just the process itself would allow us to say you need to be able to actually provide safe water and safe wastewater treatment to these parcels if you're going to develop them to that extent.
In my mind, this is a really important issue because I think many of our service districts have developed capacity based on certain assumptions regarding build out and demand, which SB nine has really kind of turned on its head. So I think there's going to need to be a lot of evaluation of infrastructure capacity before SB nine can really be utilized to the extent that maybe some envision. So I'll leave it at that.
Do any other commissioners have questions before we open public comment? Okay, Janice, may you proceed?
We're now opening public comment for item number three. And if you are calling by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. And I only see one item at the moment, or one hand raised. Ms. Lenny Roberts. So hold on just a second while I get the timer up. Ms. Roberts, accept the invitation. Unveil your microphone and begin speaking.
Morning. I think you can hear me now. Thank you.
Yes.
This, this is a very thorny topic. I appreciate Will's presentation and as an advocate who, you know, has been doing this work for forty years, I often get calls from people in a community who are concerned about, you know, development in, on a single family residential parcel in their community that has certain, may have issues as to whether it's even developable. So I just, I know what, there's going to be an incredible amount of angst in the communities in these, in all of our cities and all of our urban unincorporated areas that have R one zoning. As the, there is no process by which anybody's even going to find out that something's happening until the bulldozers start either knocking down a house or start adding new, a new structure. So I just think, you know, we are underestimating the, the social and community impacts that is going to happen about this through this through this bill, was both SB nine and ten. What is also particularly distressing and is in the staff summary, that parcels may be located in a very high fire hazard zone, earthquake fault zone, flood plain, floodway, or contain hazardous materials if they meet certain conditions. So we're going to see, you know, by many of the county's policies that are trying to protect future homeowners and future properties from being located in an area where they are subject to extraordinary hazards at a time that we're experiencing even more extraordinary hazards. This is kind of going completely in the opposite direction, just by allowing development in these areas. So I'm, I'm very concerned about that. What I do find interesting though, is that I expect that something may happen either. I know there's, there's an initiative that's being circulated that could potentially counter this measure. But also, I'm wondering about people being able to put a conservation easement, like I have a eight thousand square foot house, a lot with a two thousand square foot house. Our garden is one of our most important assets of, in my mind. I may decide to put a conservation easement on my backyard that protects it. Would have to find an agency or a nonprofit that would be agreeable to accept that and enforce it, but I think that may happen. So there may be some ways for individual homeowners to at least have some voice in what would happen or some influence on what would happen with their property in the future if they were to sell their property. This is the thought that I've had, I've been kind of mulling over and wondering if that would be a possible avenue for people who wanted to make sure that the land surrounding their residences remained open and available as helps reduce stormwater runoff. It helps with all the ecosystem services that gardens and and mature trees provide. It helps with urban heat island effects. There's just a lot of reasons to maintain the green spaces in our communities that are actually contained on individual properties. So just a few comments. I don't know if this idea of a conservation easement individually is viable, but the nature to think to pursue, which I intend to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. I will next call on Barry of Seal Cove Moss Beach.
So I have a, just a general question. We live in the coastal zone on a flat lot, twenty thousand square foot lot. Even though it's a requirement here, it's never been enforced since in my lifetime. If we wanted to split off ten thousand square feet, could we split that into four twenty five hundred square foot lots or two five thousand square foot lots with two units on it? And the second part of that question is, if services aren't available, could we still split the parcels and get into a queue as services become available? And then we could hook, hook up and get building permits and such. We just, we, we don't need twenty thousand square feet, but we probably won't split it off anyway, but we just want to get it down whether we can or not. So that's my question, and thank you for this information. I'm going to now, how do I stop this?
Yeah, you're good now. Thank you. And Chair, there are no other hands raised for this item.
Thank you. Seeing no additional members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. Does staff wish to speak to the issues raised, the questionnaire?
Well, I'll let, Will jump in, but I think based on his presentation, it's, it's the county's intent to continue to implement our, the standards of our local coastal program, which means that, you know, standards regarding subdividing a lot will all need to be addressed. And as this commission is familiar with some of the constraints to lot splits in areas like Seal Cove is, we'd have to look at things like infrastructure availability, site stability. So, you know, the requirement for geotechnical investigations to ensure that any lot created by a subdivision provided a safe place to build would need to be addressed. And so then in response to the question regarding, well, can they proceed with a division? can they proceed with a division in hopes that infrastructure will become available in the future? The answer to that is no. You need to establish the availability of public services at the time of the lot split. So I believe that responds to the questions that were raised. Will, do you have anything to add to that?
I think that's exactly right. The only thing I would I would raise is that we don't even have the discretion to apply SB nine in the coastal zone without adopting an ordinance, which specifically changes our processes. The state's law overrides ours in the Bayside in the coastal zone, the LCP, the Coastal Act, and all of our implementing ordinances for the LCP remain in force unless we change them. So it's it's not our choice whether we continue to follow those procedures. It's just a fact that we have to. So so for for the the quite the commenter, this this does not change anything for the situation that they're in.
He, if I might add, in Seal Cove, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. So it would seem that he could not subdivide unless that zoning is changed. Okay.
Yes.
So do commissioners have any comments or questions at this point?
Actually, I have a comment on what you just said, Ms. Ketchum. Isn't this person more not being able to subdivide more based on the utilities available to subdivide this slot rather than you know, what is existing as far as the the minimum size slot?
I think perhaps he's unaware that the minimum size lot in Seal Cove is twenty thousand square feet.
I think there's well, I I I think it's the minimum lot size. I think it's the lack of infrastructure. I think it's questions about geologic stability. It's the need to establish safe ingress and egress for emergency vehicles and all the stuff that you guys typically deal with.
Right. But so my my question on that is, if let's say this particular lot, you know, lacks infrastructure as far as sewer water and all that. But let's say there's other ones that actually do lie in in an area that do have infrastructure and do have and the minimum size lot is twenty thousand. Thus, SB nine now allowed the split of that lot. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Not in the coastal zone. Not.
Okay.
Any other comments from commissioners, questions, discussion? All right, if there, thank you all. And if there's no one in the class in hand, okay.
Since public hearings in the coastal side side is can be now discretionary on departments in. I've just would would appreciate that they continue to be public. You know, if they stop being public, I would like the commission to know about it because otherwise we wouldn't. But I I think it's important to the commitment of what Prop Chani was trying to do is that we do make this public.
Agreed. And we will certainly keep you updated on that and inform you of any change before it occurs. We don't anticipate that, but should that come about, we'll certainly give you advance warning. I would say that despite the prohibition against public hearings, we have made efforts to provide some notice, for example, with regard to SB thirty five projects. We have provided notice to some of the community councils who where the project is located within their area. So we haven't settled any on any sort of kind of FYI notification to community councils or something like that, but that is something we could explore, just so folks know what's coming. They might not be able to influence the decision, but if there's an interest in just knowing what's on the horizon, that's something that we could consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Okay, if there's no further discussion, we will close this informational item and thank you very much. And staff will introduce item number four.
Thank you, Chair. Item number four, owner, Cardouche Monier, applicant, Mosh Dinar, file number PLN two zero one nine dash zero zero two five two, location one three zero one and one three one one Woodside Road Sequoia Track, and our project planner is Ramel. Ramel, take it away.
Thank you, Janet. Can everyone see my see my screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, so this is staff's presentation on item number four, which is a consideration of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration, general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, major subdivision and grading permit to construct the six unit eighteen thousand five hundred fifty square foot townhouse development consisting of two three story buildings and twelve parking spaces on two existing parcels that have a combined size of thirteen thousand two hundred twenty five square feet. The project requires a general plan land use map amendment from medium density residential to high density residential and a zoning map amendment from single family residential to multi family residential. The project involves two hundred twenty cubic yards of cut and sixty cubic yards of fill and the removal of ten significant trees. The two existing single family residences are proposed to be demolished. Okay, so the crux of the project proposal is once again is the general plan amendment going from medium density to high density residential and the zoning map amendment going from one family residential to multiple family residential. The construction itself proposes six townhomes, which constitutes five four bedroom units, one of which will be an affordable unit, that is unit F, and one two bedroom unit, as well as twelve covered parking spaces, pay spaces, which constitutes to a two car parking garage per unit. Here we have a vicinity map showing context around the project site. On the west side, you have Woodside Plaza Commercial Center. On the north, you have existing multi family residential. And then on the east, you have existing single family residential. On the south, you also have commercial development. Here we have a bird's eye view of the project site. Here we have a bird's eye view showing the general land uses around the project site. Once again, showing the commercial and the multifamily and the single family residential. Here we have views of the property. The view on the top is the view from Woodside Road and Rutherford Avenue. The view on the bottom is from Rutherford Avenue looking towards Woodside Road. Here we have the general plan map, and you see the project site up on the top there. It highlighted in the green. That purple block represents the single family residential that you'll find in Sequoia Track. And then along the Woodside Road corridor, you'll see the green and the light brick red color, which is which constitutes commercial and multi family residential. You'll see the same sort of themes following along in the zoning map. Here we have the site plan and the ground level floor plan. The floor plan for the second level. A floor plan for the third level. And here we have the elevations. On the top, you have east elevation of the interior courtyard. Then you have on the bottom, the west elevation facing Woodside Road. You have the north elevation here facing Rutherford Avenue. And on the top here, you have the west elevation, also an interior courtyard, the south elevation, which faces the adjacent commercial building and east elevation, which constitutes the rear yard. Here we have the landscape plan. So in terms of decision making process, staff may is making a recommendation to the planning commission. The planning commission will make a recommendation to the board of supervisors, and then the final decision will be rendered by the board of supervisors. With respect to public participation opportunities, we have the major development pre application workshop, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration comment period. And now today, the planning commission public hearing and eventually the board of supervisors public hearing. With respects with respect to regulation conformance, the project complies with the proposed R three S three zoning. With respect to general plan policies, the project meets soil resources policies regarding erosion control, also meets the visual qualities policies. It also meets the general land use and urban land use policies, and that project encourages residential land uses in urban areas where infrastructure services are available. The project also works to vary the mix of residential land uses and will provide a substantial housing opportunity for the area through the upzoning. Project proposes a high density residential land use adjacent to commercial land uses near employment centers next to public services and facilities and at the edge of single family neighborhood. Once again, water and sewer services have been confirmed capacity has been confirmed with the project. And in terms of transportation, the project's expected trip generation of thirty trips is considered a small project and falls below C CAG, SEQA, and Public Works significance thresholds. With respect to the housing element, the project introduces the general plan amendment and rezoning of underutilized land for higher density residential development, which will help the county meet its regional housing need allocation or arena numbers. The project also promotes a range of housing development and proximity to transit and commercial districts with the development standards that facilitate development. The project meets all requirements of the subdivision regulations as well as the grading regulations and the grading drainage were reviewed by the geotechnical section of the Department of Public Works. With respect to the rezoning, the rezoning of the parcels meets the public necessity, convenience and general welfare of the community, and the general plan amendment is compatible with the adjacent land uses and will not be in conflict with the policies of the general plan. In terms of environmental review, there was an initial study and mitigated negative declaration prepared circulated for thirty days. The requisite consultation outreach was performed for the Native American Heritage Commission. No consultation requests were received. And in general, no comments were received on the neck deck. Therefore, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend that the board of supervisors adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, major subdivision and grading permit, county file number PLN twenty nineteen dash zero zero two five two by making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions. The applicant is also present for any questions and would also like to make a short presentation.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Ramirez.
I don't.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
None at this time.
Yes, I have. I have question for the project planner. Are there any? Do you have any drawings showing the the neighboring view of what other high high rises and high rise is not the word, but what other construction is there?
Commissioner Gupta, I don't have a specific map showing the adjacent development. I do have a zoning map that very clearly shows the types of development that are that is reflective of the types of development surrounding the project site. And so I can share that with you one moment.
Okay.
Sorry, having technical difficulties. One second. Can you see the zoning map that I have?
Yes.
Okay, so if you see in the zoning map, you have that light, suppose light beige, light yellow color, which represents the single family residential development within Sequoia Track. And then along Woodside Road here, we have a clear outline of the different uses available. So we have the project site here. These dark orange parcels here are all multi family residential zone properties, which do have multi family development on them. To the south, you have the commercial development here. And along Woodside in general, as you'll see the character, you have this this commercial development along with more multi family residential. We don't have the zoning, obviously, for across the street here in incorporated Redwood City. However, this is the Woodside Plaza. So it has grocery stores and and other commercial establishments. And actually, even to the west here in in the incorporated area, this is also a multi family residential development. And so it is surrounded by those type of higher intensity uses.
Okay, so when you say the multi family, are these multi story buildings to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, they are at least two stories. If not, yes, I I do know the one directly to the north is a two story structure. I believe the one across the street may be a three story structure, but I would have to confirm that for you.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, I was just looking for the compatibility with adjacent land use there. That's all I have at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
Good morning. Is there a specific plan for Sequoia Track?
No, no, Commissioner Hanson, there is not.
Is there any plan at all for Woodside Road?
Commissioner Hanson, in what respect for a specific plan along?
Well, there's a plan for El Camino that runs through multiple cities. And there's a kind of a general agreement of what's going to happen along El Camino. A plan for Woodside Road?
Nothing equivalent to that El Camino initiative that you're talking about.
Okay, no, no initiative. Does Redwood City have any? Do we know of any Redwood City plans for that corridor?
Not not specifically, no, Commissioner Hanson. Although I will note that these plans were actually referred to the city of Redwood City for review, and they also didn't have any comments.
Yeah, my concern is it kind of looks like spot zoning. And we put things in until things are reached the intolerable level, and that slowly changes a neighborhood without knowing where we're going. And that's and I don't know where we're going in this neighborhood. It doesn't look like anybody has plans, and it's kind of a free for all. That's how it's looking. And I was just wondering if my assumptions are wrong.
Hey, well, let me respond to that by saying that I I understand your concern about the kind of parcel by parcel approach that's been taken here. I I wouldn't agree with the characterization of spot zoning because I believe that all of these instances share certain commonalities, and that is their proximity to commercial services and the desire to create a transition from a higher intensity corridor to the single family residential neighborhood behind it. So I think from staff's perspective, this is the type of corridor within which we believe it's appropriate to meet the demand for housing that we've been told by the state that we must meet. I would also say that it's appropriate to look at this project in light of the SB nine workshop that we just heard, and I I did some rough calculations. We've got, you know, over thirteen thousand square feet here comprised of two parcels. I I think it's safe to assume that under SB nine, each could be split at least once, resulting in four parcels with the allowance of two units for each parcel, resulting in eight units. And under SB nine, that each would only need to have one parking space as compared to what we have proposed here. Six units with two parking spaces for each of the units. So I think if the concern is about free for all, I think in this instance, we have a scenario where a developer has taken a comprehensive look at two parcels and created a design that I think works based on the total project size, whereas if things were to proceed under SB nine, who knows what we would get through that pro parts process, but I think it's safe to assume it would be of higher intensity than what is what is currently proposed.
Yeah, I'm a in general agreement with what you said. It is, I just have problems of not knowing where we're going. Thank you. Thank you. No more questions. You're muted.
Thank you. If the owner, applicant, and any members of your team wish to make a presentation or speak or answer questions, you have fifteen minutes.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Moshe Dinar. I'm the architect and the applicant. I have with me one of my project architects, and she will be helping me share the screen to show you some of our images and explain them a little further, though I must say that Romel such a, did such a great job. There's not a lot for me to talk about, but thank you very much, Romel, for all the help you've given us. It's taken a long time, but you've done a great job. Thank you. Do you have, okay, Chinard Desai is just asking to be to enter the meeting, and she is my project architect.
She is on, she should be able to share her screen now.
Okay, Chinard, you can share the screen. Can you please give us the first perspective image? Chinard, I think she's, she needs to unmute. Hello? Okay. Thank you. This is, this is the concept that we came up for the site. Can you hear me? Okay, and initially, we were going to do like an apartment building with ten units, and then we, we had two neighborhood meetings, and we listened to the neighborhood. We also talked to the planning department, and we decided to go with a slightly more conservative approach, which is to do a more traditional contextual design. And instead of doing an apartment building, to do rows of three-story townhouses, which have parking on the first floor, parking and guest best bedrooms. And I'll show you the plans in a minute. And I'm also going to discuss the, some of the materials that we're using, but as you can see, the, the architecture is, is very, very articulated. Every part of the building displays its function in an elegant and respectful way to the neighborhood. As the director has said, this is really the ideal building to use as an intermediary between a very heavy commercial street like Woodside Road and a quieter, single-family residential neighborhood that exists behind it. So I think that by going to the scheme, we have been able to satisfy both the requirements of the neighborhood, the requirements of the city, and we also have been able to provide six residential units, very nice ones, if I may say, and one affordable one. Chinard, can you go, keep going to the floor plans, please? Okay, so the way that the units work is very simple. There is a very beautifully paved driveway, which is kind of an auto port that is shared by the development. And then each unit has open space, private open space, either on the front side or on the back side. There's two-car garage, and then there are guest bedrooms for possibly a home office or possibly a media room. Next floor plan, please. The second floor is devoted to the common spaces of the house, common, common areas of family, kitchen, dining room, breakfast room, diet, and, and a TV nook and, and other, other such amenities. And next slide, the third floor is the bedrooms. So about half of each house is devoted to a master bedroom suite, and the other half is used, is devoted to two smaller bedrooms, which could be for children or teenagers. But at least, you know, family-oriented residential. We've been hearing a lot about people moving out of California because they can't find family housing. And so we try to do in many of our developments, we try to do residential units that, that would accommodate housing or perhaps two people who want to share a unit. There are private open spaces for each unit as well as the open space. And then very significant twenty-foot setbacks at the front and the rear that are heavily landscaped. This is the landscape plan that was done by our landscape architect. And as you can see, there's the street trees, and then there's trees in the private areas. And then there's shrubs, and then of course flowers. So what you get is a great deal of privacy and, and a great deal, kind of a an array of landscaping that works with the architecture of. Can we look quickly at the elevations? I don't want to take up too much time. As you can see, the each unit is articulated individually, so that there's not just one roof that covers the entire site, but each unit has its own separate roof. Also, each unit has its own separate entry porch. There's a variety of window types, bay windows, there's articulated railings, and also lots of trellises. Can we go to the materials board, please, Chinard? So the colors that we've picked is, is we, we have a gray and some of the trim will be off-white, and then we will have olive and sand color and antique white, so in kind of beige, so that the units are each different color, but they don't clash with each other. The bottom of the units are cement plaster. The base of each unit is porcelain tile, which you can see in the bottom left corner. And then, of course, you have decorate, decorative railing. And the third floor is painted a much lighter color and is used the Borden baton in order to make the third floor look a little lighter and, and perhaps disappear a little bit. So this is, this is what we're providing for you, and I hope you like it. I hope you will approve it. And if you have any questions, we are here to answer. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Ramirez?
I do not at this time.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
No question.
Commissioner Gupta?
Yes, I do. So Mr. Dinar, are you the owner?
No, I am the architect. The owner, yeah, the owner, Mr. Munir Kardos, has been developing in this area for many, many years. Some very successful developments, and he's, he's sorry he was not able to attend this hearing today. But I, I am, I am authorized to make decisions for him if you have any concerns.
Okay, no, that's, that's a very clear presentation which you just made. My question really is, I, I hope you can answer this question, is what is the target completion you are looking at?
Well, if we can get entitlements this meeting, we will need to go to the board of supervisors for final approval. Is that correct, Romel?
Yes.
I don't, I don't know. I think that might take two months. I'm not sure. We always.
So if you add two months?
Then, then, then we have to submit for building permits, so that will take another three months. We would like to start construction spring of next year.
Okay, and?
Hopefully not later.
Okay, and how long do you estimate?
Construction for something like this is between eighteen and twenty-four months.
Eighteen to, so we are looking at two and a half years out?
Probably less than two and a half years. I would say two years.
Two years.
You know, projects take a long time to be approved, and we, we did spend a lot of time with the neighborhood and, and with Romel working on arriving at this, at this solution. And I think now that we have the solution, we're very, very interested in getting it built as soon as possible.
Okay, so is there a price target in mind for these units?
I, I wouldn't know. There's, I know that there's a performer being developed as we speak. I think that once the performance completed, there will be information made available either through real estate agents as to what, what the price is.
Okay.
These are pretty good-sized units. They're two thousand square feet plus.
Please, I, I didn't hear that.
The units are almost two thousand square feet or even a little bit more.
Right. Well, actually, that is my concern, is that sometimes the unit price is so high that it becomes difficult for people who really want to buy to afford it. So that's where, that's why I was curious about what pricing you are looking at.
I don't, I'm sorry, I can't help you with that. But we do have one affordable unit, so twenty percent of this project, no, excuse me, eighteen percent of this project is devoted to affordable people who need help of purchasing units.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you for that. And I did not see anything about where are the trees that are being removed? And, and what is the replacement plan? Like, I saw your landscaping, but is there any information you can provide on that?
Yes, we, we submitted a complete package from our arborist showing the trees that absolutely had to be removed in order to be able to build this, or the trees that really were not healthy and should be removed. We have, the report is available, and also we have the landscape drawings that show them. I will be happy if you want to look at them, make them available for you viewing.
Yeah, because I saw the report. It has a list of all the trees being removed and the reasons, and all that is there. But I don't seem to have seen where are exactly those trees that are being removed.
Okay, well, I can. They are in the, they are in the report, they should be, I hope. And they are in the landscape drawings, and we can make those available to you.
Moshe, they're also available in your, I believe it's also shown on your civil sheets as your project is showing.
Okay, yes, yes, these are the civil sheets.
Okay.
Yeah, it shows the trees to be removed and.
Oh, I see, those small accents. Is that what, that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Those are the trees. The lot's not very big, so it'd be very hard to build this without replacing the trees. But we are providing more trees than are currently on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now we'll have, oh, Commissioner Hanson, lost my place. Commissioner Hanson?
Hi, good morning. Which unit is designated for the affordable housing?
It's Unit F, which is at the end. Unit F, it's right there in the back.
And as.
That one, that one. Do you see that? Do you see the, she's pointing it to it?
Yes, I see it.
Yeah.
And it's going to be built to the same standards as the other?
Oh, it has to. It has to by law. We cannot, we can't even put a different kitchen counter. It has to be exactly the same.
Excellent. How did you choose the number of units to put in? What was your?
Well, the reality is that we initially had started with a higher density, because as you know, projects now are going to higher densities. The lot is owned only for two houses, which is, is not possible financially. So I, we had done several other projects in, in, in the Bay Area that are townhouses or row houses, and it's a very nice building type. It's a really nice way to live. And it's ample, and it's, it's not, it's affordable. So we decided, why don't we see how many townhouses we can get in here, and very quickly, six became the magic number, and since one of them is affordable, then five of them will be, will be for profit, and one of them will be, will have no profit whatsoever.
Okay, so you're building basically within your wheelhouse?
Excuse me? I'm sorry?
You're doing what you do best.
We do what we do best, and we try to make it better every time.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, now I have public comment. Jess?
Thank you, Chair. We're now opening public comment for item number four. Let's see. I don't see any hands raised for this item, Chair.
Okay, seeing that no members of the public wish to speak, if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed.
Madam Chair, if I could note, I just want to make sure the commission received the correspondence that was provided, because we did receive a letter regarding this item.
Yes, did, I did receive that. Did the other commissioners receive the, the email this morning? I think it's posted on the website as well.
Yes, 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 on my part, yes.
Yes, I did.
Okay, could we stop sharing that screen now and move on to commissioner comments and deliberation?
I should, what I should do?
Pardon?
What?
Just thinking. They need to be muted, I think, at this point, yeah.
Right, public comment is now closed, and we'll move on to commissioner comments and deliberation. We'll start with Commissioner Ramirez.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity. I know there is, you know, some concerns, you know, the, the concerns that especially Mr. Hanson had about, you know, the lack of plan overall. But I would say, knowing since I've lived here in this area all my life, and I've gone, you know, up and, up and down Woodside Road pretty much almost every day, I think. I've seen the development over the years, and I think where this thing is going, I think is, it, it has just morphed into this area where it's more of a commercial and, you know, high-density housing as you'd look up and down Woodside. You know, without any particular plan, but that's pretty much what this has become. So this particular project, I think, in, in my opinion, is actually a very nice and well-done project. You know, you got to remember that recently, we also. Project, um, you know, you gotta remember that recently we also allowed another project, just a little bit up. Um, just a couple of blocks down down from this one. Um, so. Um, I was also trying to do the math, just like uh, uh, Mr. Monowitz did as far as like. You know, what would happen if SB nine SB nine now uh, is to be implemented and used to to uh. To develop this uh, lots, and I think we would actually get a much worse uh, situation as far as. Um, you know, how many units would go into that and the setbacks and all that. So. In my opinion, I think this is a very good project, and though I I think we should allow. And so I'm gonna say, uh, I'm in favor of the project.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
I wanna ask, uh, whoever this um, knowledgeable about this. Uh, follow-up question, then Commissioner Hanson asked, how do they determine? Uh, who will get this uh, low income um, or affordable unit within that project? Is that a lottery system? Do they already know who they're gonna give? Um, just in terms of equity, I mean, how do they determine who will be the uh, the person who will be uh. Giving that 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 unit?
Um, I will try to address that answer to the best of my ability, and Rumel and uh, Tim, please jump in. So, I thi- I think there's a minimum requirement that the person who uh, rents or buys that unit. Be of a certain income scale, and it's the um, applicant and the landowner's responsibility. To make sure that they are compliant with that. Um, there are lottery systems available, whether or not. This property owner wants to avail themselves to that service, I believe is really up to them. Um, as long as they find a qualified resident uh, that meets those income criteria. Then they can move forward with uh, the transaction.
So basically, the owner of the project will determine who will occupy that low-income property, even if it's a relative or it's not relative. There's no um, like a county determination, how to how to backfill that position, that uh, housing unit.
Not that I'm aware of, but uh, Mr. Fox, do you have anything to add? No.
Yeah, our inclusionary housing requirements are generally a prohibition on selling it at a market rate, which keeps it affordable. Um, so yeah, there's no process by which uh, the county selects a person to reside in a residence that's. Um, created by virtue of our planning and building function.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Gupta.
Uh, to follow up on that question, um, Commissioner Santa Cruz brought up something that. Kind of triggered a question in my mind. Um, is this some, before. This affordable housing goes on the market, supposing, supposing it's for sale. Is there something included in the CCNR? Uh, to say that it's affordable housing, since uh, the owner is taking com- complete care of. Uh, how it's sold, whom to, is it, it is sold? How does it work?
Typical practice is to require a deed restriction that identifies which unit and the limitations on uh, future sales.
Okay, okay, so there there is already a process.
There's a legal document that ensures that um, all future owners are aware of the restriction on this sale price.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, so. I I feel that um, I like the looks of the project, and I think it's a, it's a good design. Uh, meets, meets um, all the. Uh, height requirements, the setbacks, et cetera, et cetera. Landscaping looks good. So, I I think it's a good project, and uh, I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson.
This project has a lot of desirable uh, components to it, and um. But the one theme that I think I've always been consistent on in all my years here is, how is it? What is the intent of any project and where are we going and trying to achieve? And I've always had a problem in Sequoia Track because I don't know what we're trying to achieve. And but to me, that always feels like spot zoning, at the equivalence of it. And I, as I did with the last project, um, I'm not comfortable even. Uh, with a good design and good objectives. I don't know if that's where I wanna go. Because when you put these things in, you're talking for the next fifty years minimum, and I want a discussion of where we're going. Before I can sit there and say, I, if I'm gonna change the zoning, I wanna know where we're going. So I will say no, but it isn't based on uh, the design or the other subjective elements in this.
Is that it? Um, I, I, my thought on this is that the um, I like the design. And it does seem appropriate for Woodside Road, and I understand the concern. Uh, the email we received, there was discussion about the s- the sound. Uh, cushioning provided by the current trees, and I think this building will um, greatly help. Will actually help attenuate sound from Woodside Road in the residential neighborhood behind. That leaves, of course, the privacy issue, so one would hope that the trees they plant there are narrow and tall. Um, but that would be the only issue I'd see, so I'm in favor of the project. Um, may we have a motion?
I'll make the motion. Can we put the motion up?
Do we have a second?
It, is she going to read out the uh?
Do we have a second?
There will come, I I I'll second uh, when she may finishes the uh, the motion.
Good. So the Planning Commission recommends that the Bo- Board of Supervisors adopt the mitigated negative declaration. And approve the general plan amendment, zoning map amendment, major subdivision and grading permit. County file number PLN two thousand nineteen dash zero zero two five two. By making the required findings and adopting the conditions of approval identified in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Chair Ketchum.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hanson opposed. We'll move on now to item number five.
Yeah, item number five, Owner Sun Cal Properties and Investment Partnership LLC. Applicants Raj Sharma, file number PLN two zero two zero dash zero 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 four three. Location off uh, Ocean Boulevard between Presita Avenue and Bernal Avenue, and the project planner is Canoa Kelly.
Um, Commissioners, this is, as she said, is an item number five. Um, this is a consideration of a coastal development permit, uh, design review, uh, approval. A non-conforming use permit and variance. The uh, the the coastal development permit. The non-conforming use permit is to allow um, the redu- reduction in the front setback from twenty feet. To fourteen feet eight inches, and the variance is to allow an increase. In the allowed site coverage to thirty-two percent. And this is to develop a eighteen hundred sixty-one square foot uh, single-family residence with an attached uh, two-car garage. So, just to go back in time a little bit, this is the, as a reminder, the item was continued from September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one Planning Commission meeting. Uh, and it was requested that we continue this item to allow the uh, planning commission time to review. The geotechnical report, uh, and a geological survey. Uh, and those have all been included in the attachments. Um, additionally, there was a. And a request to update the geotechnical report to analyze sea level rise and its uh, and its projected um, cliff erosion. And that has also been included in the attachments, the uh, updated geotechnical report. Uh, and then finally, there was a request to allow planning commission time to review coastal commission comments that were submitted. Uh, the day before the um, the hearing, and uh, so they could review the recommendations. And the recommended uh, conditions, and all of that uh, conditions actually have been added to the. Um, conditions of approval and attachment A. So here we are, uh, this is uh, just to revisit the project. It is located um, on Ocean Boulevard. Between uh, Bernal Avenue, Presita Avenue, you can see it there. It's a a view from Ocean Avenue looking in on the parcel. There's a bird's eye view there of the parcel uh, and the cliff in front. And here's the design of the residence that uh, was approved by the Coastside Designer Review Committee. See it here, and here's the uh, the rear. So here's the landscape plan. Unfortunately, we were uh, unable to update it in time. Um, so one of the previous comments was that the the trees, there's a large tree proposed in in the backyard. That any large tree would be removed from the landscape plan, and we recommend that as a condition of approval. Um, that we require the removal of those those trees as well. So here's a detail of the non-conforming use permit. Um, you can see there, the front garage um, encroaches into the setback. Um, so there, uh, in order to comply with the parking standards, uh, there in front. The applicant's requesting a um, non-conforming use permit to reduce it. Uh, they require front setback from twenty feet to fourteen feet eight inches to accommodate that uh, that garage there. And additionally, the applicant is also requesting a variance, and this is to increase the site coverage. As we said, from twenty-five percent, which is the maximum in this uh, zoning district, to thirty-two percent. Um, the the parcel itself is substandard, under five thousand square feet, whereas the uh, minimum lot size in this. Um, zoning district is twenty thousand square feet. Um, so staff recommends that uh, variance be approved, as included the uh, required findings in the staff report. Uh, to allow the uh, the plan to uh, address, you know, onsite parking. And to allow the project to comply with um, design and view uh, standards in this district. And here is the uh, slide that we included previously, shows about um, you know, per RGIS analysis. Only about eighteen percent of the parcels and steel code are able to, or less than the the subject parcel. Majority of these smaller parcels are uh, undeveloped. Uh, this is to show, to demonstrate the uh, where the project's located is in a geological hazard zone, so GH uh, zone. The um, majority of the project will be in zone three, which is the most stable part of Seal Code. And only a small portion uh, front there is in zone two. The geotechnical report was uh, submitted, reviewed and approved by the County Geotechnical Department and. Um, analyzed for, I think, such as slope instability, landslide and fault activity. And uh, the conclusion was that the risk of these um, geological hazards were very low at this site. And here's the um, this, the bluff retreat analysis that was done, this is the updated analysis. And and this includes sea level rise, so uh, a, and they also included uh, you know, uncertainties. You know, from optimal conditions all the way to kind of the most conservative estimates for bluff retreat. And even with the most conservative estimate, um, in this projection, you can see that fifty percent. It's within a few feet of uh, Ocean Boulevard, so the uh, the report concludes that. Uh, within that fifty-year timeframe, the project is still viable and therefore will comply with. The LCP uh, requirements. And uh, so you can see here, the product, aside from the um, the site coverage. And the uh, front setback, the project otherwise complies with all of the other uh, zoning regulations. Uh, complies with our designer view standards, general plan and uh, LCP policies, and as detailed in the in the staff report. Project is exempt from, by my view, pursuant to single guideline, uh, class three. Or construction of small structures, including new single-family residences. And uh, our staff's recommendation is that the planning commission approve the coastal development permit. Uh, designer view, non-conforming use permit, and the variance by adopting the required. Uh, findings and uh, conditions of approval for certain attachment A. So that concluded my uh, presentation. Uh, when planning commissioners asked that I uh, insert a uh, photo. Into the presentation, she had a question on that later on, so I have, so it's in the slides, just to to demonstrate. That we can go back to uh, for uh, for a question in the future, but that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Uh, let's start with Commissioner Hanson. Question?
I don't have any further questions.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Neither do I.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No questions.
Commissioner Gupta.
Uh, yes, I do. Uh, there were some conditions added. Uh, numbers, conditions fourteen through seventeen and attachment A. And and I would like uh, like you to summarize those for me, wh- what, what are they saying? And what would they do? Uh, attachment A, conditions fourteen through seventeen, uh, under coastal. Mission con- uh, conditions, some title like that.
Fourteen, let me get there, almost there here, okay, um. So the applicant showed remove, we're relocating part of our whole uh, development authorized by the Coastal Development Permit. So this is, uh, again, uh, we, we kind of covered this at the um, the last meeting. These are um, to, to ensure that the applicant is aware of the um, the risks. Associated with developing on a, uh, on a near a cliff uh, side. And that uh, it may be necessary for um, the house to be uh. the house to be condemned for safety purposes. If, you know, if the, you know, if it's very hazardous condition and say the bluff has retreated and the house is in danger of falling into the ocean. That the lead agency can take action to make, to ensure that there's no one living in the house, that the that the house can't be utilized if there are hazardous conditions present. So that was, that's, that's the overview of these, you know, conditions here, condition fourteen. Again, the fifteen, the risks are on the applicant, and just so that they're aware of them.
Okay.
And are there any specific conditions that
If we go to condition seventeen, so it says prior to issuance of the building permit. So they have to meet these, provide these, this information?
Yes, for this information, a deed restriction is required to be reported on the property. Just so that people know that it's in a geological hazard area. And that is, that's required to go on to the deed there, and we need evidence that that has been taken care of.
Okay, and this is, to my understanding, this is something we added?
Yes.
This time to the staff report, to the condition?
Yes, these have been added based on the coastal commission comments and conditions that they recommended, so we reviewed them and then we've added them to the stack.
Okay. And for my benefit, could you could you state what else has been added to the staff report this time?
To the, to the conditions?
No, not just conditions, just engendered to the staff report, is there a?
The staff report has only been updated. It's, it's the, it's the conditions have been updated, and as far as the staff report goes, it's just the analysis of the updated geological report that has been updated in the staff report.
Okay, okay, yeah, I noticed that I wanted to make sure I'm not missing anything that was, that was added to this one, this report. Okay. Thank you for those answers, and I would like to know, in your drawings, I see this construction going on in the lot behind, behind the, this project lot. Do we know anything more about that? What kind of construction is that?
Just a single family home, it's going in.
With any, is that part of unincorporated San Mateo County or?
It is, it's still in, it's still in that area.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Gupta, that was approved by the county, and there's no appeals filed to the planning commission, which is why it didn't come to you.
Okay, okay, that is not a problem, just curious as to how that compares to what what we are looking at at this time, so, okay, so it's probably didn't require any variances or in anything that would bring it to the planning commission. All right, so, thank you. And that did not have same kind of risks associated with it or hazards compared to the lot in front?
It's most likely in the geological hazard zone, zone three, so they most likely would have submitted a geological report and soils report that staff would have reviewed that project. But it's not in a, it's not in a, you know, high risk area, it's in the most stable part of Seal Cove.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much, no more questions at this time.
Regarding your question about the house behind under construction, it's at twenty five Bernal, it's has, it's let's see. It's a five thousand square foot lot, so it's only two hundred and forty square feet bigger than the lot we're considering today. And it, it it's quite, it has a, has no variance. They were able to accomplish that without a variance, plus they are not on Ocean Boulevard, they're one whole house behind, away from the bluff retreat issue, and so oh, and in the the coastal hazard zone three, which as the planner stated, is not as hazardous, whereas the project we're looking at today is the front yard and the street in front of that is in coastal hazard zone two. Anyhow, so my questions. Could you show that image that I sent you? I just wanted to speak to this, basically the foundation, this is the foundation of the former house across the street, and the concrete foundation is jutting out into thin air, and large sections of it are on the beach below, and this relates to in November twenty twenty, the Richardson Geological Report stated, quote, erosion of the lowest portion of the bluff along this reach of Ocean Boulevard is primarily caused by wave action during high tides or storms. Weak, fragile sedimentary rocks, such as the Parisima Foundation, tend to be easily eroded by waves, causing block falls and debris slides on the cliff-like bluff face, unquote. Now in October twenty twenty one, the Richardson Report addendum states that claims that the toe of the bluff is stable and not affected by storm wave action, and thus does not, they don't account for future slope stability in that. So I just want to help, help me understand how to reconcile this image where this foundation is jutting out over the beach, and how is this match up with that the toe of the bluff is not retreating? I know that, I don't think the geologist is here today, but maybe you don't have an answer, but I just, I just see that, and so.
Yeah, I mean, I think that it's hard to know the circumstances under which that the former house was built. And clearly, there is erosion occurring, as acknowledged by the geotechnical report, and as that erosion occurs, you know, that old foundation will continue to collapse, but just by virtue of the fact that there was an older house that you know, has resulted in that debris, I don't think you can't draw any conclusions from that related to the geotechnical analysis, other than to say, yes, erosion is occurring, the question is at what rate?
Well, my question relates to, he's saying, yes, he acknowledges the erosion occurring at the upper level in the coastal terrace, but that this now in the updated report, he's, the rest of the bluff is no longer fragile, and the base is no longer moving, and the toe of the bluff is no longer moving. If you could show the cross section of the retreat analysis? Not there yet.
The cross section, please, no.
So yeah, my understanding was that the periodizing information is harder rock and mostly erosion was happening at the top of the bluff. And so you can see that it's kind of seeping down as slope. And that's why less erosion is happening at the foot. And majority of the erosion is kind of there at the top, you can see how it's kind of sliding like that.
So in this scenario, you have, he's saying now that the toe of the bluff is stable and not going to rot anymore, so this erosion at the top will only make the slope more gentle and less hazardous, and you don't, you wouldn't need to account for slope stability as you would if the base were also retreating. And, and I don't understand, when you see the picture of the house across the street, where clearly, and I think that happened in eighty two, the beach is down there, it's not a slope, anyway, I don't understand the shift between the wording, the description in twenty twenty, that this is fragile sedimentary rock, easily eroded by waves, causing block falls and debris slides, which we see elsewhere along this bluff. How this is no longer going to happen, I just I have in trouble reconciling that, okay, so so much for that issue, I have some other concerns. One is the condition of approval number nineteen, to submit the geotech report at the building permit station, if any hazards are found, mitigation would be provided in the design, foundation design and grading, and as I noted at our September hearing, deep piers and tieback foundation for coastal hazard stability were, which the coastal commission disallowed for one ninety nine Arbor Lane on appeal, as they disallowed it as a form of coastal armoring. So this condition doesn't address that, and I just wanted to point that out. The, sorry if I'm a bit disorganized, the key issue for this project would seem to be how long the road and utility access to the parcel will remain viable, because it's mid-block, as and, and that the bluff retreat analysis should focus on this, rather than the point where the house itself is endangered. And and also that this bluff retreat, to keep in mind that the bluff retreat is not when the edge of the bluff reaches the house, or reaches the end of the road. There's, it's a time when in normal people would look at the situation and say, whoa, we better do something here. The bluff is only ten feet from the edge of the road. You know, it doesn't have to, you know, so, and so for that reason, the corner of the garage encroaching, you know, the variance. No, no, that's actually not the variance, the variance was in the footing. The garage issue is, it's not so much the front yard, it's the road. When the road becomes unusable and the water in the sewer in the road. So this is kind of a different situation than I haven't, than what I've encountered previously in my experience, when looking at bluff retreat. And because you can't, once the, once the road is in danger, is the fire department going to say, well, I'm sorry, we're not going to drive our big truck on that road? Or if they, since they do have to move the house or demolish the house, once it becomes inaccessible, they won't be able to move, they won't be able to move the house, because they would have to move it out onto the road. So there's all these other constraints as far as the future of it, whereas the houses on the corners. They have, they enter from the side street, so it's more traditional situation, so as far as the variance itself, which is for the lot coverage, if they, it would seem like the smaller the house, the, the more it would facilitate accommodating this temporary situation where, you know, our LCP has not been updated, and we still have this kind of out of date fifty year lifespan for residents. Even a manufactured home that could be moved in, and then at some point, well, it's time to relocate the home or something, I just let me stop for now, and let's move on to the applicant, the, do you wish to, your team wished to speak at this time? Your group could have fifteen minutes. Mr. Sharma?
Hi there. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
We hear you, go ahead.
Okay, great, I just want to say thanks for taking the time to review the project. Is anything in specific that you want me to address? Seems like you've covered all bases from what I understand.
Okay, so for the commissioners, let's move to questions for the applicant, Commissioner Hanson.
I don't have any further questions, other than ask the client, you understand the economic risks over the long term you're taking?
Yes, I understand, based on what you said.
I mean, you're not looking for the county to bail you out?
We believe in the long term that things will you know, be fine, God willing. I just have faith in God that things will be fine, that's what I'm basing it off.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Ramirez.
No, I don't have any questions. And by the way, it's a good presentation for my perspective, thank you.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
No question at this time.
Commissioner Gupta.
No, I think Commissioner Hanson has already made sure or reemphasized to the applicant that hopefully he understands the risk involved in this. The applicant is much closer to the project. We are just reviewing the information that has been provided to us, so no, I don't have any question at this time.
Okay, now we'll have public comment on this item, I'll turn this question over to Ms. Luhan.
Thank you, Chair, we're opening public comment for item number five. If your hand is raised, your name will be called. And right now I do see one hand raised from Ms. Lenny Roberts, so go ahead and put the timer up. Just a second. Ms. Roberts, you'll have five minutes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, and thank you, I'd like to thank the staff for the staff report and the updating of the of the information that the commission requested, and also thank you commission for requesting the further information on this project. As you know, this is in Seal Cove, which has has been the subject of a lot of geological concern and actual activity of land movement, and both to the north, as the Richardson Report notes, there are two major deep-seated landslides that are very close to this property, one is to the north, where we have the the restaurant, which is on an actual moving part of the landslide, continues to be moving. And a number of homes are also very adversely affected there that have been, that were built many years ago, most of them. And then there's another deep-seated landslide very close to this property on the south, so I, we do have concerns that there could be the potential for additional deep-seated landslides that could affect this particular property, as well as some of the surrounding parcels. And one of the concerns that hasn't really been addressed is that because these are individual lots and they have individual stormwater disposal on the site, which just means you have to put your stormwater into a subdrain and then let it percolate more slowly out. Nevertheless, that new impermeable, more impermeable, the more impermeable surface out. Nevertheless, that new imperious, more impervious, the more impervious surfaces there are cumulatively in the Seal Cove area, the more likely it is that the, um, the shallow landsliding will continue to occur. Because the, um, because the, the groundwater emerges as springs on the, on the bluff face, about twenty feet down from the top of the bluff. So that is going to continue to be probably exacerbate the bluff erosion process. Um, and which will also exacerbate the cliff and bluff retreat. As the Richardson report did note, note, um, we also, uh, we, we share the same concerns that Commissioner, Ketchum, um, raised this morning about the, the lowest portion of the bluff that is the Piersima Formation, uh, which had been described as tending to be easily eroded by waves, causing block fill, block falls and debris slides on the cliff-like bluff face. This, um, these, these various geologic processes taken together, I think, could result in, in more substantial bluff erosion than has been projected. So, um, and that of course will affect Ocean Boulevard and both, both ingress and egress to this property as well as sewer and water. Earlier than it affects the prop, the house itself. Finally, we do not believe that you can make the findings regarding the variance request. There are, as, uh, staff said, there eighteen, eighteen percent of the parcels in Seal Cove are equal to or less than five thousand square feet. This is one of those eighteen percent of the parcels. The, the applicant, the findings for variances have to be that the parcel size varies substantially from those of other parcels in the same zoning district. There, if there's eighteen percent of the parcels, then this doesn't vary substantially from, there's a, there's a substantial number of parcels that also vary from the, from the, uh, minimum, um, lot coverage. So, um, we don't believe you can make those findings for the variance. Uh, the house can be redesigned to be smaller. There, there even could have a basement, uh, and, and that would take care of additional square footage that the applicant would like to have. So, um, we, um, we continue to have those concerns and we appreciate your consideration of our comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's see, just a second. Do you see one more or two more hands raised? We'll have, um, Barry from Seal Cove. Barry, please accept an invitation. I mute your microphone and begin speaking.
Well, hello again, Commissioners. So I can see this house through my windows. And even though it will block a little bit of my view, um, I think it's a great looking house and it should be built. I would say let the insurance companies worry about whether the house is going to slide off into the, into the ocean. If the owners and developers want to build it, I think they should be allowed. The utilities are planning to move stuff behind, um, the Ocean Avenue. So that's in the planning stages. And the other thing I'd like to mention is not, uh, solely for this project is, in that I've lived on the coast since nineteen eighty-seven. And since then, I have never seen the twenty thousand square foot lot, um, size enforced. So I'm just wondering why that's on the books. None of the houses out here that have been built in the last three or four years is four or five of them just in this immediate Seal Cove area. None of them are twenty thousand square feet. So I think it's kind of an odd, odd ordinance. And, and I have no idea why it's, it's still there because it's never been enforced. Anyway, I hope the house gets built. I hope you approve it. It looks like a great looking house. So thanks for letting me speak. And by the way, I have no interest. I don't know who the owner is. I think infill lots should be allowed, um, if they're on the books. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Um, and next I have, um, let's see, the name is T M A C H R Hold. So I'm going to go ahead, unmute your mic and begin speaking. Did you hear us? Okay, um, for some reason it's not unmuting and you guys, this is the last hand raised. So I don't know if you want to give them a few seconds to try again. Oh, and then so maybe we'll come back.
Hello.
Hello, go ahead.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, sorry. I, the unmute button was covered there. Um, my name is Tim Mackold and I live, and I live with my wife Diane. Uh, we're up the street on Bernal and, uh, like Barry, we're, we're not going to oppose this house. And I look forward to having Mr. Sharma as a neighbor. Um, the, the problem is on my mind is the, the same thing that both of the other speakers have said, which is basically the Manhattanization of this little area. When, when the county, you know, got this open space right next to us, it's, it's a real jewel for the county. And, you know, uh, to have all these houses come in here. And if you look at the, the, the one, it wasn't in the picture, but the one up the street that's under construction right now, that thing's huge. And that houses on either side of, of the one that's proposed are very modest. And I don't understand why the county can't be more strict in enforcing the setbacks and the lot coverage and the actual scale of the house on these smaller lots. There's no reason for, for these larger houses to be built on these small lots. And I'll, I'll say one thing further, that there are several lots that are just twenty-five by a hundred. And I, at some point, you gotta draw the line and say that we're not going to allow huge houses to be put on lots. And at some point, you gotta say there is a minimum and the minimum was supposed to be five thousand square feet. So I just don't understand how the, everybody can kind of look the other way when you have a ordinance or a, 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 a rule that allows you to, to make these determinations and then you just look the other way. So I, I look forward again to having Mr. Sharma as a neighbor. And I think it's a slippery slope for the county to continue to let these large structures be built on small lots. I happen to be lucky and have a third of an acre and I'm back a little ways. And this house won't block my view because the last house that went in is going to block my view and this one's behind it. So I, I really don't have any issues with it, other than the way the county is treating the ordinance. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you so much. And with that, Chair, that's our last, um, hand.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no additional members of the public wish to speak. And if there are no objections, public comment on this item is now closed. Does staffers to speak on any of the issues raised?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Ketchum. I would like to respond to the questions and concerns that were raised about how the county is applying minimum lot size requirements. And as the commission knows, um, we have, we run into many instances where pre-existing lots were established before minimum lot standards, uh, were required by the county. So, and we call these legal non-conforming lots. And so when the county adopted the twenty thousand square foot minimum, there were many lots within this area that had already been divided, including down to as small as the twenty-five hundred square foot size that was mentioned by one of the speakers. Now, um, it, the county has limits on what it can do in terms of prohibiting development on private property. Um, but we do what we can to ensure compliance with all the relevant standards. And in fact, most recently, well, in, uh, I want to say twenty nineteen, um, the county updated its subdivision regulations, which address, um, certificates of compliance for legal non-conforming lots or not illegal for, for lots that were created and that are non-conforming. If you have a vacant parcel prior to being able to build on it, you need to demonstrate that your lot was legally created. Um, and there is a bunch of, uh, case precedent that establishes, you know, what we can and cannot do through that legalization process. Um, but since twenty nineteen, we've restricted the issuance of certificate of compliance is type B, meaning it was not created in accordance with the subdivision regulations at the time, that, um, you can only get a type B certificate of compliance for a substandard lot, um, if it's conditioned to prohibit future development. So the county has made an effort to ensure that development doesn't occur on substandard lots when those lots were not created in accordance with the legal requirements of the time. So, uh, I just wanted to address the questions and concerns that were raised by the speakers. And, um, it doesn't affect the staff recommendation on this item at all. We continue to recommend approval in accordance with the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so now we'll move on to Commissioner deliberations. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Hanson.
You're muted. I would ask the applicant to sincerely listen to what Commissioner Ketchum and Lenny Roberts mentioned. I'm, I'm a geographer by training. And I've seen everything in the world accelerate beyond what, what I was taught to be expected from my training in university in the nineteen seventies. I, I can't, if I could prove in my mind that your risk of their house falling within fifty years into the ocean, I would vote against this. I, do I believe it's possible? Yeah, I really do. I can't prove it in my own head that it was, because I really don't want you littering the, uh, beaches with concrete and pipe and stuff like that, you know, where somebody else will have to remove out and takes away from everything. So my quandary is always in these cases is, you know, you have and you can, um, write to your property, you have the ability, we all have the ability to do stupid things that don't affect other people. And would I build in there? No. Would I love to live on the coast side? Absolutely. As a person who supported Prop twenty in the beginning, I don't want to really see another person out there. So, you know, in every which way, I would like to say no to this, but I can't. It's just, there are certain rights with this job, loving to say, you have the right to do this. I'm not recommending you do it. So I will be supporting it unless someone can show me why I can't. So thank you.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Um, I, I think I'm going to second, uh, the, uh, the comments of, uh, Mr. Hanson. Um, I think that it's not the ideal place to build, but I believe that, um, the owner understands the, um, the hazards, uh, and, and, you know, what, what he's getting into. And I especially like that now we have some language, um, on the report that, that, uh, protects the county from any liability. I know, uh, Mr. Fox last, last time told us that, you know, the county already has ways, uh, to, to limit liability. But I, I like to, you know, I like, I like it now that we actually have something on this report that specifies that the county is not liable. You know, as, as this, uh, house may, may have to be demolished at some point. So for that, uh, reason, I'm going to say, um, I'm also going to support it because I think, uh, uh, the, the owner has the right to develop his, uh, lot um, for the enjoyment, uh, you know, of, of, of his, uh, uh, or what he has as, as an owner, that writes as an owner. Anyway, that's my comment.
Mr. Santa Cruz.
No comment.
Commissioner Gupta.
I, I'm listening to Commissioner Hanson and Commissioner Ramirez and, um, again, it's, it's the right of the owner to build something on his, uh, property. That's, that puts, puts a little, um, question mark in my mind. I'm hoping, uh, he understands the ramifications. Uh, experts, um, the geotechnical experts have given their opinion. We have our opinions as to whether this, um, bluff will last fifty years or not. Um, and how close it would come to the, um, uh, to the house and to Ocean Boulevard. As mentioned by Chair Ketchum, that if the, if the property cannot be accessed by any emergency vehicles, how can they do anything with it when, when there's a problem? But even with all those concerns, I don't think I can stop the construction, uh, stop the approval. So with all those concerns, I would, I would go for it. I would support it.
Well, I, I cannot support the project. I don't have confidence in the, the G, the bluff retreat analysis, uh, as I pointed out, and, um, that's the reason I, I will vote for it. But I also think that, um, aside from that, the, the position that we, that we are in and, and land use planning. And okay, so we have all these great disclaimers and, uh, as to the road and all this stuff and, and to have to approve something like that when we're, we're faced with sea level rise and planning for, uh, retreat and how we're going to manage this to be adding to the problem is seems this total disconnect. And, um, but like I say, that's not the issue here. The issue is, I don't think this report is adequate. And, uh, so I will vote no. So anyway, uh, do we have a motion? Maybe we have a motion, please.
Uh, I, I will move, uh, that the planning commission approved the coastal development permit, uh, design review, non-conforming use permit and variance as per county file number PLN twenty twenty zero zero four three, by adopting the required findings and conditions of approval listed in attachment A.
Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Bye. Commissioner Santa Cruz.
You're muted.
You did.
Don't you know body language? No.
Thank you.
Sign language, sign language.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
No.
Thank you.
Motion is approved, three to two with Commissioner Santa Cruz and Ketchum opposed. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on now to the director's portion of the meeting, which will be followed by the election of the, uh, planning commission chair and vice chair for next year. So let's start off with Steve.
Thank you, Chair Ketchum. Um, I don't have any correspondence to report other than the correspondence you received for items four and five, which I believe have been addressed. With regard to our next meeting, uh, we do not have any items currently scheduled for the January twelfth agenda, uh, but at the following January meeting, we anticipate presenting the San Mateo County Parks Department's application to
the San Mateo County Parks Department's application to undertake an off-leash dog pilot project in the coastal zone, in the midcoast. So that is sure to be an interesting and important hearing. So other items of interest, I'm pleased to inform you all that Mr. William Gibson, who made the presentation earlier today, will be receiving an award as the county employee of the month. It's very well deserved. He'll be receiving that award at the next meeting. It's the first time in my experience that a staff member from planning and building has received this countywide award. And it's well deserved for all the great work he's done on our housing element and other related projects. So very proud to see that. Another piece of good news to share with you all is that the county was successful in applying for a grant from the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. Just last week, they awarded the county over a million dollars to undertake the next step in moving forward with the evaluation of potential improvements to the Highway One corridor in the Moss Beach area. So happy to have that resource to facilitate the efforts that were already underway in that regard. And then finally, I know the commission's been receiving some of the notices or all of the notices regarding pre-application workshops. There's one coming up on December fifteenth for a project on eighty on Middlefield Road that involves eighty five, a hundred percent affordable units. And on the following day, on December sixteenth, the North Fair Oaks Community Council will be conducting a study session on the housing element update, which is forthcoming. So I wanted to bring those to your intention in case you would like to attend. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Steve?
No, no questions. I just want to say congratulations to Will.
Yes.
Yes.
I will pass that on.
Yeah, yeah, please pass on mine, too. One question for you, Steve, that on yesterday's Board of Supervisors agenda, they had something about how do I read that? About these planning consulting services.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Gupta. I should have had that on my list to update you. So, yes, in fact, yesterday, the board supervisor approved a contract with a consulting firm that will be helping us with the next phase of zoning updates in the North Fair Oaks area. So this is pursuant to the community plan that we previously developed. And our interest in facilitating high-quality development along both Middlefield and El Camino. What we've discovered in implementing the plan that was adopted was that our ability to achieve the types of projects envisioned by the plan is really limited by the fact that the areas eligible to develop it, that type and intensity are limited to the half of block that fronts on El Camino or Middlefield. And what we've discovered in implementing the plan is that if we were to extend that area another to to cover the entire block from the El Camino or Middlefield to the next street, then that opens up a lot of opportunity to achieve the types of development envisioned by the plan. So that will be the subject of the future amendments, and the contract that was approved yesterday is for the consulting services that will help us get there and include a very intensive public outreach and input program. So you know, what we'll be recommending to you in that regard is yet to be seen, but we will be initiating those public outreach and planning efforts in the near future.
Yeah, we're seeing basically a change of new economy of we're moving away from small shops and small, small of everything. Because you can't get the economic leverage that is to do the redevelopment, particularly in an area that is as expensive as ours.
Correct. And the commission has seen examples of this in the past. We have done project-specific amendments to do this type of extension of the redevelopment area. This gives us an opportunity to take a more comprehensive look at the entire strip with regard to that, those types of proposals.
Trying to second guess where the economy is going in this out, you know, I've worked on the Bay Meadows, and what we thought was viable twenty years ago is, you know, a good portion is out the door, you know, it's left a couple ideal sites just vacant, because that reality doesn't, isn't going to happen in my lifetime. You know, it just, things change. I'm glad you're looking at it and looking at it from a different perspective.
Thank you.
And the other question I had is that a redistricting map was approved by the Board of Supervisors. So is, does that change any of our unincorporated areas? Did they move into a different district to your knowledge?
I I haven't been following that closely. The only potential impact that I can think of is that I I believe the appointment of commissioners. There's, you need to reside within the district that you live. So if there was a change in the boundary, it would affect who would be eligible to serve as a commissioner for what district, but it has no effect on our building zoning or general plan policies.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any any other commissioner comments at this point?
I have one before we move on to the next item. I want to share with you that I have advised Supervisor Canepa on my decision to resign from the the position of planning commissioner effective this month. And I also shared with him that I was grateful for the opportunity. And I'd like to thank each one of you for your technical support while I held this position for over four years. Specifically, I wanted to thank Janet Lohan for her always friendly and always professional support. She provided me while I held this position. Thank you very much, Janet. Okay, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
All the best to you, Mario.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Gupta.
Well, that's a surprise. Yes, best best wishes to you. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I was trying to like held on a little bit longer, as I said, to Supervisor Canepa, but conflicting responsibilities and business need from my own wouldn't allow me because of many troubles that I have to do, and I feel kind of guilty that I have not that sometime I have to call in that I won't be able to make it. So if I can provide a hundred percent of 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 my devotion and attention, I I feel kind of like really bad not providing the best. Yeah, thank you very much.
We'll miss you.
Okay, well, I will still hope to see you soon in my restaurant, Commissioner Gupta. Thank you.
Hey, Mario, thanks. You know, thank you for the time that you spent with us. And so just I hope that everything goes well, you know, when whatever endeavors you're on in the future.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Ramirez, and thank you for your technical support as well and the side conversation while I wasn't able to understand some of the topics, which were very helpful from your part. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks.
I'm going to miss your smile. You always had a smile, and you always had a great greeting in the morning. Particularly, we were meeting in Redwood City. I had just enjoyed your company.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, now it's time for the planning commission election of chair and vice chair for next year. You start off with the nomination for chair.
I was.
May I?
Please.
I am going to, it's my honor to propose Commissioner Ramirez for the chair's position to the planning commission.
I'd be happy to second that.
I I will accept, although, you know, now with Mario moving out, obviously, it wasn't my time. It was his time. So been that Mario will not be around, then I'd be glad to step it step into the position. And I I have to, you know, now shape up, because it's a lot easier to just sit back and let the others do the work. So I I'll have to, you know, the come up, remember what with what it used to be. So sure, I'll I'll accept.
Okay, so we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Gupta?
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Approved unanimously. So may we have a nomination for vice chair?
Well, let's nominate Commissioner Gupta.
I second that.
Okay, oh. What you got to say?
Do I speak first, or do I?
Sure.
You you don't have a choice.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, with Commissioner Santa Cruz leaving, it changes things, it changes our dynamics here, but I'm glad Commissioner Ramirez is there to take care of things. I accept.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
Hey, Commissioner Gupta?
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Hanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez?
Aye.
Chair Ketchum?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay. Thank you, Janet.
We're good to go. See you all in January.
Actually, if if I may, before we leave, I think it's important, and perhaps Mr. Canepa already has a replacement for 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 Mario here, but I think we we need to, you know, send a message, because in the past, it took a long time to get a replacement. That is important to for them to send another person, because it makes it a lot easier to run the meetings when there's all five of us are in the meetings. So that's my
I could, yes, yes.
Everybody brings a unique perspective that sometimes, for me, I have not thought about, and I actually contemplate the things you do say. So having the fifth voice is very important for me.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, because again, you know, when when we, for a while, we only had four. When you run the meetings, you really, it it's a little more difficult to to come up with conclusions, or sometimes you have to, you know, go around to try to persuade people to go one way or the other. I I think it's just easier when there's five rather than four.
I I think he already considered that when I when I talked to him, but I'll kind of like remind him and be a a turn in the back, sort of like saying, hey, just find the replacement supervisor, and his supervisor, Canepa, no, Canepa.
Oh, just, all right. Thank you for the, yeah, thank you. So anyway, that that's my suggestion.
I would like to congratulate Chair Ketchum for a job well done. It was so good to have you in that position, because most of our projects come from District Three. And you have the ins, you had the insight into those, you were part of the community. And and it made made at least my job much easier to listen to you and learn from you on these projects. So thank you very much, Chair Ketchum.
I will second that. I will second that. I think overall, we have a very good balance group of people here that that bring a lot of different experiences. So thank you, Chair Ketchum.
Well, I think you'll probably still be hearing from me on coast side issues, but it 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 was interesting and a challenge and to do this. And I guess I pretty much do it by rote, and I hope you don't get bored with that, but it is kind of a relief to be done. But anyway, I made it through. Okay, so, see no further business over there? See no further business. The meeting is now adjourned.
Okay.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Yeah.
Yes. Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye.